In remembering us unworthy foolish people, wretched people who were here, it has pleased thee to seek us and to save us, make us as your children, and brought us into your sanctuary, O Lord. Nearly twenty-four years ago, you have brought us here, especially the local church. Thank you for gathering all the brothers and sisters by the word of the gospel, by the truth of the gospel, and by the work of the Holy Spirit, Lord, wrought almost twenty-four years onwards. We thank and praise you for all those who have been gathered together, brought into the fellowship of thy saints among the inheritance of God, and to El Shidai, whom thou hast purchased by your own precious blood. We give all glory unto you, Lord, and today we are able to show forth our gratitude, our Lord praise and adoration to you for your faithfulness, for your wonderful mercy, and your favor in which thou hast remembered us and brought us into such spiritual standards where we are able to grow, we are able to, Lord, be fruitful, we are able to multiply. Thank you for all the souls who have been multiplied. Thank you for all those who have been baptized. Thank you for all those who could share the gospel and through them they could see the whole places being, Lord, brought into the knowledge of the Lord Jesus Christ, several villages, several towns, several places. And we thank you for the assemblies established. We thank and praise you for the work increase, multiplying, abounding, and growing in Christ. We thank you for the servants of God, the small brethren. Thank and praise you for all thy saints who have been praying day and night, and thank and praise you for the wonderful ministry that there was established, Lord, in this area notorious, most terrible area, but yet you have kept as a lampstand, as a candlestick, as a witness, Lord, to these ungodly people around. Thank you for keeping us, Lord, in the land of the dead and preparing us for the land of the living. We give all glory unto you for that faith that was given unto us, the hope that is deposited in our hearts, that love that is poured into our hearts, and we thank and praise you for all the ministry that has been accomplished for the past, Lord, yesterday and today also. We thank you for bringing thy servants, Lord, with the Raitr Kumar, with Abraham, with Alan Jin. And thank you and praise you for using them in our ministry. Today also, our servants will be sharing thy word, filling with thy thoughts, with thy words according to the need of thy people. The amazalize thy word from thine heavenly throne. And, Lord, we also pray that the amazalize please help us, Lord, leading, singing, playing of instruments. And, Lord, we pray that the amazalize bless our time of fellowship together. Speak to me and speak to us. You know our needs, you know our shortcomings, our failures, our wrong tracks, and also our wrong thinking, attitudes, behaviors, and where we are going down spiritually, where we are being attracted and deviated from the truth of the word of God and from the gospel. We pray, the amazalize please strengthen us and encourage us, dranga, bring us back again and into your fold and to us to have Jesus Christ always before us. Thank you for the cross. Help us to always remember the cross, remember the work accomplished for, Lord, and you have made us, you have called us unto your kingdom and to your glory, and therefore we need to walk worthy of that calling. Yeah, well, Lord, we pray, the amazalize please help us and guide us, take charge of us. Will the whole place thy presence, thy glory covered under the sprinkling by the precious blood? By faith we bring ourselves on the headship, kingship, and lordship of Lord Jesus Christ. Lord, without thee we cannot do anything apart from thee, we are nothing. There will help in translation, mic system, PA system, recording systems, live streaming system, music system as well. And also, Lord, we pray for those who have to come, bring them with expectation, hunger and thirst in time, do not miss anything, Lord, during this time also. Prepare us also for tomorrow's ministry undertake for us, assembling ourselves, expecting great things from thee, binding the powers of darkness, claiming thy victory. We offer this prayer with thanksgiving, the blessed name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Part 11, we are going to sing the last one. We are only going to sing two parts.
Part 11. Part 11, we are going to sing two parts. Part 11.
Sarvona ta staram bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Sarvona thundagudavi sevakulayu diyu. Sarvona thundagudavi sevakulayu diyu. Sarvona thunichitambuna sarvadasutiyu chedabu. Sarvona thunichitambuna sarvadasutiyu chedabu. Sarvona ta salam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Paraloka e ru shunne bulo parishuddha sankambu. Parishuddha pathanamanduna prabhu esu kriestundu. Parishuddha pathanamanduna prabhu esu kriestundu. Sarvona ta salam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Devu ni sevaasana bulo devu ni mahima. Subana kiri tam gulam darichina petta. Subana kiri tam gulam darichina petta. Jivu namadhyanu diyu devu ni gopilaa. Jivu namadhyanu diyu devu ni gopilaa. Ganata mahiva prabhavamu yuga yugamulu ayanake. Ganata mahiva prabhavamu yuga yugamulu ayanake. Sarvona ta salam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige.
Part 11.
Neeli gaganana velige tarala. Bolilo kana velugudam. Madura swarampu akshula boli. Esuna ke stuti paadudam. Madura swarampu akshula boli. Esuna ke stuti paade dam. Bhuvula paramalam bulallam. Tootalo vyapinchunathlugam. Bhuvula paramalam bulallam. Tootalo vyapinchunathlugam. Bhuni ka todap lokamaneri. Tootalo paramalam nim bhuvu. Bhuni ka todap lokamaneri. Tootalo paramalam nim bhuvu. Neeli gaganana velige tarala. Bolilo kana velugudam. Madura swarampu akshula boli. Esuna ke stuti paade dam. Madura swarampu akshula boli. Esuna ke stuti paade dam.
Part 11.
Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno. Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno. Na priya esuni nenepodugantuno. Na priya esuni nenepodugantuno. Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno. Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno. Akalita pul dukamu manave dana le dachana. Akalita pul dukamu manave dana le dachana. Paramama kutamu pondano. Prabhu padam mulacheeridano. Paramama kutamu pondano. Prabhu padam mulacheeridano. Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno. Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno. Siluva veyabadditi nee ikane ka du divenchuta. Siluva veyabadditi nee ikane ka du divenchuta. Prabhu esu mahima korako. Uregali ki jivirtuno. Prabhu esu mahima korako. Uregali ki jivirtuno. Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno. Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno. Na priya esuni nenepodugantuno. Na priya esuni nenepodugantuno. Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno. Paraloka me na swasthyamoh epodugantuno.
Part 11. Part 11, we are going to sing two parts.
Parishuddha mandiramuna ko. Parishuddha mandiramuna ko.
Parishuddha Mandiramunaaku Nirmincha Manthivi Prabhuva Nirmincha Manthivi Prabhuva Israelu Nivasa Mokhadi Eer Paracha Manthivi Prabhuva Israelu Nivasa Mokhadi Eer Paracha Manthivi Prabhuva Parishuddha Manthira Munaaku Parishuddha Manthira Munaaku Tumma Karato Mandasamolu Tumma Karato Mandasamolu Chesibangaro Nupodiginchina Chesibangaro Nupodiginchina Tumma Karami Reyani Antivim Tumma Karami Reyani Antivim Parishuddha Mandiramunaaku Parishuddha Mandiramunaaku Karunapiitamu Kavalenantivim Karunapiitamu Kavalenantivim Karunapiitamu Ne Ne Anuchu Karunapiitamu Ne Ne Anuchu Praanamidithivim Karunanuchupi Praanamidithivim Karunanuchupi Parishuddha Mandiramunaaku Parishuddha Mandiramunaaku Nirmincha Manthivi Prabhuva Nirmincha Manthivi Prabhuva Israelu Nivasa Mokhadi Eer Paracha Manthivi Prabhuva Israelu Nivasa Mokhadi Eer Paracha Manthivi Prabhuva Parishuddha Manthira Munaaku
Part 5, song number 5 From the sheets, part 5 One to two lines, one to two lines
Sarva Shaktuni Vaakuhidie Sarva Mulu Vive Devuni Sarva Mulu Vive Sarva Shaktuni Vaakuhidie Sarva Mulu Vive Devuni Sarva Mulu Vive Paulayna Kefahayna Appaluayna Lokamayna Paulayna Kefahayna Appaluayna Lokamayna Oh Navih Mariyevi Aynam Oh Navih Mariyevi Aynam Sarva Mulu Vivega Sarva Mulu Vivega Sarva Shaktuni Vaakuhidie Sarva Mulu Vive Devuni Sarva Mulu Vive Jivamaynan Paranamayna Jivamaynan Paranamayna Raabavu Navihaynannu Raabavu Navihaynannu Sarva Mulu Vivega Sarva Mulu Vivega Sarva Shaktuni Vaakuhidie Sarva Mulu Vive Devuni Sarva Mulu Vive Krothrasrusti Swasthyam Putrashnu Aynannu Krothrasrusti Swasthyam Putrashna Kyamaynannu Devuni Jivavakyamu Devuni Jivavakyamu Sarva Mulu Vivega Sarva Mulu Vivega Sarva Shaktuni Vaakuhidie Sarva Mulu Vive Devuni Sarva Mulu Vive Sarva Shaktuni Vaakuhidie Sarva Mulu Vive Devuni Sarva Mulu Vive
Part 6 Part 6, one to two lines
Akashama Halakinchuma Mataladhan Akashama Halakinchuma Mataladhan Ehoavantu Ayana Janamegada Yakové Swasthyabagemu Ehoavantu Ayana Janamegada Yakové Swasthyabagemu Annyakane Shambula Yenduna Annyakane Shambula Yenduna Dhikaradhani Galahera Rilo Vanikhanu Gonenu Dhikaradhani Galahera Rilo Vanikhanu Gonenu Avarinchi Vaniparamashinchi Kache Kanupa Pagaa Avarinchi Vaniparamashinchi Kache Kanupa Pagaa Akashama Halakinchuma Mataladhan Akashama Halakinchuma Mataladhan Ehova Ewa Inadi Pinchino Ehova Ewa Inadi Pinchino Bhumi Okkayunnata Stalamula Midavani Nekchche Bhumi Okkayunnata Stalamula Midavani Nekchche Annyadhevatalo Naidaru Lokapavaniro Annyadhevatalo Naidaru Kekapoyevaniro Akashama Halakinchuma Mataladhan Akashama Halakinchuma Mataladhan Ehoavantu Ayana Janamegada Yakové Swasthyabagemu Ehoavantu Ayana Janamegada Yakové Swasthyabagemu Akashama Halakinchuma Mataladhan Akashama Halakinchuma Mataladhan
We will stand up and sing this song Brother Sandhir, we are going to sing it Brother, sisters, we are going to sing it And sisters, we are going to sing it Brother, sisters, we are going to sing it
The best book to read is the Bible The best book to read is the Bible If you read it every day, it will help you all the way For the best book to read is the Bible Patimpa Sreshtra Grandhamu Bible Patimpa Sreshtra Grandhamu Bible Anudinamu Patinchina Prima Tooranadhunu Oh Patimpa Sreshtra Grandhamu Bible Dunia Me Sabse Pyaar Pustag Bible Dunia Me Sabse Pyaar Pustag Bible Parijousko Rosbaros Marme Katra Koi Naho Oh Dunia Me Sabse Pyaar Pustag Bible Vasikkasrendha Postagam Vedam Vasikkasrendha Postagam Vedam Anruno Nivasa Thaal Kundramal Narathume Oh Vasikkasrendha Postagam Vedam
Shall we pray?
Pray, brother.
Heavenly Father, our hearts are grateful, Lord, for God like you, to whom we belong.
Brother, we are going to pray For God like you, to whom we belong.
One who loves with everlasting love.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Never changes.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Has so much of long suffering for us.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Desiring to conform us into the very image of the Lord Jesus Christ.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And waiting to receive us to yourself.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And we thank you, Lord, for such God, who is our God and who is our shepherd.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And he is God who speaks.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
We worship you, Lord, for all that you are, that revealed to us through the Lord Jesus Christ.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
We thank you that through the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ, you brought us close to yourself.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
We thank you for the eternal word that you have given to us.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And thank you, Lord, for the gathering this evening.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And helping us to celebrate special meetings during these days at El Shaddai.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And we pray, Lord, that our hearts would be knitted together in love with one another.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
We will be drawn closer to you.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Bless the ministry of the word.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Undertake for the ministry of interpretation.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
With thanksgiving, we pray in Jesus' precious and powerful name.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Amen. We are going to look at defeat in a Christian life.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
In fact, should we ever think of defeats in Christian life?
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Because the Lord brought us into the ground of victory and he always wants to give us victory.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
But living on the earth like this, where there is full of sin, can man fall, can a believer fall and be defeated?
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And if the man is defeated, if a believer is defeated, what should be the situation? How can we deal with that situation?
For God like you, to whom we belong.
We want to keep those things in our mind and turn to Joshua.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Chapter 7.
It is a bit longer, it's a large chapter,
but we want to look into this chapter so that we can get a full account of the story here.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
As we know that Joshua is one of the historical books of the Bible.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And Bible has several books that are historical.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
We have books on poetry.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And this book happens to be one of the books of history.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And the narration that is mentioned is absolute truth.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
The incidents are true.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
And the stories are true, people are true.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
So when we approach a book like this, there is no man-made stories that are induced into this.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
That means you and I can fully trust and have full confidence that it is God who is speaking to us even today through his word.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Chapter 7, verses 1 through 26.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
Reading alternately.
For God like you, to whom we belong.
The first verse in Telugu and second verse we will read in our languages.
For God like you, to whom we belong. For God like you, to whom we belong. For God like you, to whom we belong. For God like you, to whom we belong.
Joshua said, "Men, we will go."
For God like you, to whom we belong. 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 For God like you, to whom we belong.
So about 3,000
कबै जनलो इंचुमिन्स्तु मूड़ वेलमंदी आकड़ी वेल्ली गानी वर हाई वारु एतुर्तर एकपोइरी, अपुर हाई वारु वारलो मुप्पादियारु गुरु मनिष्युलो हतमुचेसी मारियो तमा गविनियोद्दानुंडी, शेबारीमु वरकु वारिनी तरमी मोरादुलो वारिनी हतमुचेसरी, कबै जनल जनल गुंडेलो करिगी नीरय पोयनु
Then Joshua
योश्वा अस्तन पट्टल चिपुकुन गानु इसरायल प्रतिल सायंकालम वर एहो वंसनल तनेलम मोकमुल बोस्तु
Of Israel
तमतलम दोल पोस्तुकुन्नचु अय्यो प्रभा, एहो व मम्मुनु नशिंपजे उनाट्लु अमोरील चेतिक मम्मुनु अप्पगिंच्चुटकु ई जनलनु ई योर्दानु निवेंदुकु, योर्दानु निवेंदुकु दाटिंचितिवी मेम योर्दानु अवतला निलिच्यु नुडितम मेलु, निवसिंस्तमेल
Oh Lord
प्रभु कनिकनिश्म
I say, "The Israel has turned their back before their enemies"
चप्पगल, एन एम चप्पगल कनानीलुनु, ई देश निवासलंद्रुनु विनी मम्मुनु चुट्टुकुनी, मा पेरु भूमि मीदा उन्दकुण्डा तुड़ची वेस्नेडला कनमयना नी नामुनु गुंचिनी वेमिच्चे युद्ध वनी प्रार्थिंपगा
So the Lord said to Joshua, "Rise up"
अहो व श्वास
Why is it that you have fallen on your face?
इसरायली विलु पापम चेस्युन्नारु, नेनु वारु तो चेसनी बंधननु वारु मीर उन्नारु शपितमयना दानी कोन्तत तीसुकुनी, डोंगिली, बोंकी, तम सामानुलो दानी उन्छुकुनी उन्नारु
So the sons of Israel cannot stand before their enemies
शपित्रले तुनुकु तिर्गिव
Come back before their enemies
निम्मदनुकुण्डा, मीरु वारी निर्मूलम चेस्तीने तप्पा नेनु मिक्तोड़ा युनुन
Unless you destroy the things
निव लेज जनलनु परिशुद्ध परिचि वारु तो इलागुचप्पु रेपट्टीकी मिम्मुनु मीरु परिशुद्ध परिच कुणडी इसरायल देवड़ा इन एहो व सलिच्छे मनगा इसरायल आरा मी मध्य सापग्रस्तमयनत तोकटिकल्लादु मीरु दानी मी मध्य उन्दकुण्डा निर्मूलम चेवरकु, मी शत्रुले तमीरु नेलवर रेरु उदयमुनमी गोत्रमुल वर्षन बैठी, मीरु रपिंपर्दुरु, अपुर एहो व ये गोत्रमु सूचिंचुनो आदि वाम्शमुल वर्ष प्रकारमु दगरकु रावलनु एहो व सूचिंचु वाम्शमु कुटुमुल प्रकारमु दगरकु रावलनु एहो व सूचिंचु कुटुमुल वापुर्शल वाम्श प्रकारमु दगरकु रावलनु अपुर शपितमयना दी यवनियोद्दा दुर्कुनो वानिनी, वानिकी कलिगिन वारिन अंदरिनी अग्नि चेतक काल्चि वेवलनु, एलयनगा वड़ी एहो वानी बंधननु मीरी इसरायलो दुष्कार्यमु चेस्न वाडु अनिनु
So Joshua rose early in the morning
इसरायलु मारि गोत्रम वर्षन बैठी, दगरकु रपिं
Of Judah
युदा गोत्रम पट्टबड़नु, पधिहेडो वशम चौथन्दी, युदा वाम्शमुनु दगरकु वच्चन अपुर जरहीयुल वाम्शमु पट्टबड़नु, जरहीयुल वाम्शमु पुरुषुला वर्षुना दगरकु रपिंच्वन्ना पुरु जप्ति पट्टबड़नु
He brought his own son by mine and I can
युदा गोत्रम जरुमुनु जप्ति मनमुनु कर्निमुनु
The tribe of Judah was taken
आकानु पट्टबड़नु अपुर योश्वा कानुतो, नाकुमारुड़ा इसरायल देवड़ा एहो वाकु महिमा चल्लिंची आयन यद्दुतो ओपुकुनी, निव चेस्न दानी मरुकचेका, नाकु तेलुकुमनी निनु वेडुकुन्न चुन्नानी चप्पगा
So again Joshua said
इसरायल देवड़ा एहो वाकु शोधमुनु पापम चेस्तीने चेस्न निजमु, दोपुर सुम्बुलो नोका मंची सीनारु पायवस्त्रमुनु रण्डु वंदला तुलमुल वेंडिनी, एबदि तुलमुल यत्तुगलवक बंगारु कमिनी नेनु चूची वाटिनी आशिंची तीसुकुण्टिनी, इदिगो अदिगो नाडेरा मध्य भूमि लो दाचबड़े उन्नावी आ वेंडी दानी क्रिंदा उन्नानी उत्तरमिच्ची, तानु चेस्न दंतयु ओपुकुने नु
So Joshua
शुरु योश्वा दुतर अम्पगा, वार डेरा यद्दु परिगेट चूच्न आ डेरा दाचबड़ेनु, आ वेंडी दानी क्रिंदा उन्ने नु कबै वार डेरा मत्तुन्डी वाटिनी तीसुकुनी योश्वा यद्दुक इसरायल यद्दुकुनु तेची, एहो व सन्नि दिनी उन्चिरी नवा ते योश्वा इसरायल अंदनु, जरुकुमारुन आकानुनु, आ वेंडिनी अभयवस्त्रुन बंगारु कमिन आकानु कुमारुनु, कुमातुनु, युद्धुनु, वार्डुनु, मंदनु डेरानु, वानिकलिन समस्त सुनु पट्टुकुनी आकोरुलोयुनु तीसुकुनी, अच्छीरी अपुर योश्वा निवेलमुनु बादपरिस्त्री नेडु एहो वानिनु बादपरचुननगा, इसरायल अंदरु वानिनी राल्लत्तो चावगोट्टीरी मारिनी राल्लत्तो कुट्टन तरवत अग्नि चेतक काल्चि वारिनी दाराल्लनु पत्ता कुप्पगा वेसरी अनेट्टु वरुकुन्नदी, अपुर एहो व कोको द्रेकमु विच्छन वाड़ी मल्लुकुनु, अंदु चेतनेट्टु वरुकु, आचोटिकी आकोरुलोया अनि पेरु
There is a man called Josephus, who is known as a historian and he has written some reliable narrations and history
कबै चरित्रकारु जोसिफस अन्य ओकायुन्नाडु, आयन आप मारि एन्तो मारि निर्धारकारमयना चरित्रिका विवरल रास्य
They are known as extra-biblical instances that are recorded
कबै वी बाइबल एतरा ग्रंधालानी चप्पवरताई
And they are also reliable and dependable
कबै वी नम्मदगिनवे, वीटिनी मनमु कोधिवरुकु चुड़ावच्चुड
And in his writings, Josephus
कबै ई जोसिफस अन्य व्यक्ति रास्यना रातलो
He affirms the story of Joshua of the Bible
योश्वा बाइबललो उन्ना योश्वा का कथनु तानु कुरा निर्धारण जेस्नाड
And he also points out to the defeat of this particular place, AI
ई हाई अन्य स्थलमुलो वीरु चविचुशना ई वोटमिनी कुरा रास्यनाड
He mentions slightly different word for this
कबै दिनिकी कोधिगा वेर्य माटत तानु उपयेगिंचनाडु
Mentioning about ekar, he says ekar instead of ekhan
कबै आकानु पद्लगा आकारु अन्नाट्टगा कोधिगा पदम मार्चन
And there is another scholar, a very biblical scholar and whom I have regards and his name is F.B. Meyer
F.B. Meyer अन्य इन्कोका बाइबल विध्वानसुड़नाडु, नेनु कुराने गुदुन
And he points out to the conquests of Canaan
कनानुलो मारि वीरु जयमेत्तिना, लेदा वीरु मुट्टडिचना
But it has taken seven years to get over, you know, to capture and, you know, to go through the conquests
चुरंडी, वारु अविदंगा जयत्र यात्रलो, आ कनान अंतत्नी आक्रमिंचुड़ानी की एड समस्तल पट्टिन्नानी आयन रास्य
And he also mentions that during this whole time, this is the only defeat that we find in Israel
कबै इसरायली विलु युद्धम चेस्न अप्रांतल निट्लो कुरा, इक्कड़ मात्रमय वीरु वोटमिनी चूसरु
And the narration of, in chapter 7 reveals how Israel was defeated
कबै एलाइ इसरायल ओडुपयर अन्नदी, एड वज्यमुलो दिव्युस रुत्तांतमु
Now, we know that Israel is God's people, God's chosen people
कबै इसरायली विलु देवुन चेते एयरपर्स वन्ना प्रजल मनमो रुगुदमु
And he has promised victory and possession of the land of Canaan
आ कनानु देशमु सतंतिंचुकुमनी, वारिकी वाक्तान मिच्चनाडु, विजय मिच्चनाडु
And when we talk about Israel, we are talking about believer who is also called, who is predestined by God
इसरायलु कुचुमुन चेपुकुन्ना पुरु, मारि देवुन चेता मुंदुगान निर्णयिंच्चबड़ना विश्वासी कुरा मनु पुरुचिस्त
And we believe in the predestination of God for every child of God
देवुनी प्रतिपिद्दकुरा, देवड़ु मुंदुगाने निर्णय, निर्णयिंचने निर्णयमुलो उन्नाडन नमुताम
That means every believer has eternal security
अनगा नित्यमयना भत्रता प्रति विश्वासी कुन्नदी
But can a believer be defeated?
मारि आ विश्वासी ओडुपोकल्ले डंटार
And is there a defeat in Christians' life?
लेदा वाका कृष्ण तुनी जीवतमुलो वोटमिन उन्दंटार
And message from Joshua, chapter 7
योश्वग्रंधम एडो ज्यामच्चे वच्च अत्रम
Is very important because there are several things that we notice here that would help you and me
निकु नाकु सायपट्टके एन्तो प्रामुक्तम अम्शालु एड वज्यमुनु
Number one
मुद्दत्ती
When God puts a boundary around us and we cross that boundary, we sin
चुरंडी, देवड़ु मनकु ओका सरिहद्दुनु, ओका कंचनु वेगा, मनमु दान दाटिते मनपापन जस्त
Secondly
रण्डो दी
God takes sin seriously and it has consequences
देवड़ु पापन एन्तो तीव्रंगा परिगणिस्ताडु, आ पापनिकी परियावस्थन उठ्तुन्दी
That means brothers and sisters, we cannot play with sin
अनगा सऊदर सऊदरला, आ पापम तो चलगाट्टम चेल
However colorful and attractive sin appears to be
एन्तर रंगुलुगा पापम कनिबिच्चना, एन्त आकर्षणिंगुन्ना आडले
Thirdly, referring to particular sins, when one man sins, sin can affect the whole community
कबै चेस्न फलाना पापम ओका व्यक्ति चेस्ना, आ समाजम अंतत्न में दान प्रभा मुठ्तुन्दी
Now fourthly
नालगो दी
Sin must be confronted, confessed and cleansed
पापम चुरंडी, पापमु एदुर्कवाली, पापनु ओपुकवाली, पापनी आ शुद्धि कानावस्रम
Then God cannot compromise with sin
तरवत देवड़ु पापम तो एन्नडु राजिपड़डु
So that teaches you and me that even with children, with anyone in our own people, we cannot compromise
कबै पिल्लल विष्यमुलो कानी, देवुनी प्रजल विष्यमुलो कानी, एक्कड़ कुरा पापम तो राजिपड़गुर
When they commit sin
वर पापन जस्ते
We have to tell them it is sin
चप्पाली, इदि पापमयनी
Whether it is small lie or big lie, lie is a lie
चिन्ना पदमा, बद्दमा, अपदमा, अपदम
Cheating is cheating
मोसम, मोसम
And children can easily cheat
चुरंडी, पिल्लल एन्तो सुनायसंग मोसम जस्त
So if God cannot compromise with sin, we cannot compromise even if that has to be our own children
कबै मन पिल्लल आयना सरे, देवड़े राजिपड़न्ना पुरु, मनमु राजिपड़गुर
Then God keeps his word to fulfill his promise
तरवत चुरंडी, देवड़ी चेन वाक्तान ने नर्वेस्त
Now listen carefully
तात्विन
Therefore, a believer, as a believer, you cannot lose your salvation
विश्वासी गानी रक्षणुनु कोलपु लेवु
And you need not live in fear all your life thinking that you are losing your salvation
नी रक्षण पोतुन्देमो, पोकट्टुकुन्तावेमो, अनि जीवितांतम भयपड़तु उन्दकु
If you are saved by God's grace and by faith
विश्वासमुदारा कुर्पचेतनी रक्षम
Your security is forever
नी भत्रता निच्चित्तमुलु
You are sealed by the Spirit of God
निव देवुनी आग्नि चेता मुद्रम
You have received the Holy Spirit
निव परिशुद्धात्मक पुन्नाव
And you are secured for eternity
निव सदाकालम वरकु मुद्रवेबन्ना, भत्रपच्चपन्ना
So, we need to live without fear, thinking that we are going to lose our salvation
मनपा, रक्षण पोकट्टुकुन्तामेमो, अन्ना भयमुत एपुर मनु उन्दकु
Now, as we look into this chapter
य अज्यमु चूस्तुन्डगा
There are three focal convictions that every believer should know to be aware of a defeat There are three focal convictions that every believer should know to be aware of a defeat.
ओटमिलो प्रति विश्वासी मरी तीसकोल्सिना मूड़ू विषयलुला तनु निश्चेमुलो निकिलदा ओपुदलोकी तीर्मानल तीसकुनछ मुड़ू विषयलु
Defeat in Christian's life so that you will not allow defeat in your life.
चुरेंडी क्राइस्ट योका नी जीवितमलो ओटमिनी, अनगा नी जीवितमलो नी आ ओटमिनी अंगीकरिंच गुरुद
Now, we should look to them not with our experience but with God's perspective.
अनगा मन अनुभवमुत्तो वाटिनी चुरा गुरुद, देवनी द्रुप्पदमलो चुराल
There are times you can just hide your sin if it is your experience and it is your view, but with God's perspective, how should we understand this?
कबैटी नी दृष्टिलो आ पापन्नी नी वें जस्तो कुन्सालो दाच्पेट्कुंतो, कानी देवनी द्रुप्पदमलो, देवनी दृष्टिलो मन चुरा
Here are three focal points.
कबैटी ई मूड़ू विषयलु में मन ध्यासा मन मनस्वेताल
These are convictions.
कबैटी ई वी ओपुदलु लेदा तीसकोसिना तीर्मानल अनकोच
Firstly, consequence of sin is a defeat.
कबैटी चुरेंडी पापमल्ला वच्य परियावश्रम, तानी परिणाममे
That means if you commit sin, you cannot keep thinking that you are living in victory, you have a defeat there.
अन्डे चुरेंडी, पुरुमीर पापन जेसरु, पापन जेसन्द्र रदन नाक विजयम उस्तदी, विजयम उस्तन अनुकोले, मेरु ओढ़पनेटे
So, don't play with sin.
कबैटी पापम तो आटल आडुरु
Secondly,
रेंडो दी
Calling on God leads to overcoming defeat.
देवुनी वाइपु, लेदा देवुनीकी मोरपेट्टुद्वरा, मरी आ पा आ ओटमिन जेस्तम
So, what you and I should do,
कबैटी नी नी नेंचे ले
When such a thing happens,
अलांटी जरिना पुरु
As the word teaches us,
वाक्यम बोधिस्तुन्ना का
Cry to God for mercy when you are defeated.
कनिकरमुकरकु नी ओढ़पन नपुरु, देवुनीकी मोरपेट्टु
Thirdly,
मुड़ो दी
A confrontation with sin should be dealt.
पापन्नी एदुरुकोडा मनादि कच्चितंग जर्गाल
That we are going to see from the portion again.
इब्बुरु आ भागमुस्मन चुरुबोतन
Verses 16 to 26.
पदहार नुचिर्वेल अदेचुस्तम
The first one,
मधु दी
The consequence of sin is defeat.
पापम योका परिणाममु ओटमिन
Look into verses 1 through 5.
मधु दी आईद वच्चनल जुस्तम
Secondly,
रेंडो दी
Calling on God leads to overcoming defeat, verses, chapter 6, I am sorry, 7, verses 6 to 15.
कबैटी एड़ा वच्चनुची, पदियन वच्चनुरुकु देवुनीकी मोरपेट्टुटा वलना, आ ओटमिपा विजयम
Now, brothers and sisters, all of us should note this, that God has not called us to a defeated life.
ओढ़िपोये जीवितमु कोरकु मनम पिलाबडलेदु, सहोदरे सहोदरलार गमनिंचल
But he has given us a victorious life to lead a victorious life.
विजयवंतमन जीविता नी जीविंचरनके इच्छड
But many can lead a defeated life, not knowing the answer from the scripture.
लेखनमलो द्वारा जवाबु लेनिकानन बट्टी चालमंदी ओटमिलोने जीविस्तुन्तर
But he wants us to be leading a victorious life.
आइते मनमु जय जीवितम कलिकुंडने प्रभु कोर्तन
And when people are, you know, defeated and live in that,
प्रजल ओढ़पय वाद दांटलोने जीविस्तुनपुरु
This is dishonoring to the Lord.
इदि देवुनीकी गनहीनत्र
This is disgraceful.
अनगा देवुनीकी अपकीर्तिदेच
And also it is disappointing.
अन्ते कादि एन्तो निरुत्साहपर्च
When God has given us so much of resources to lead a victorious life and you are not doing that, it is disappointing.
विजयवंतमन जीवितम जीविंचरनके अन्नी वनरुलु, अन्नी वसतुलान इच्छिन, तर्वाता कुड़ा नु अलागे उन्ना मनादि एन्ता विचारकर
It is dishonoring,
इदि गनहीनमेन
It is disgraceful,
अद अपकीर्ति
And also it is disappointing.
अन्ते कादि एन्तो निरुत्साहकर्मेन
But is there a way to come out of such a defeated life and live victoriously?
मरी ओटमिज योका जीवितमलोन्ची, विजयवंतमन जीवितम बाइटकोच्या मार्गु
Does the Bible have answers to say that God is patient and he will forgive our sins and give us victory?
कबैटी परिषदरंदमलो मनुक जवाबु उन्नाय, देवुडु तीर्कशांतुडै, आयनम मन प्रति प्रश्नकु जवाब इच्छेवाड़कु उन्नार मन
So, let us dive into this portion, chapter 7.
रेंडी योश्वकरंदम वेड़ा वच्चमलो वेल्लम
Verses 1 through 5 is in front of us.
मधु दी आईद वच्चनल मनमु उन्नाय
The story of Israel says that when they sinned, they were defeated by the enemies.
कबैटी इसरायलु पापमु चेसनपुरु, शेत्रुला चेता ओढ़िपोयन
Now, this has been the story of Israel over and over.
इदि इसरायल चरित्रलो मरला मरला जरिना कथ
If you look into the book of Judges,
न्याद्वतल गंधम जुस्ते
This has happened over and over.
तिरिगी तिरिगी जुस्तम
People were committed sin and they were defeated,
प्रजल ले पापन जेस ओढ़पनर
And they sinned against God,
देवुनीकी रोधन पापन जेस
And God is raising up judges,
देवुडु न्याद्वतल नेप्तुन
And continue to protect his people.
तन प्रजल ले कापड्तुने उन्नार
So, it is a man's nature, the man's fallen nature is to be prone to sin.
कबैटी मानव योका पतनस्तिते इंटंटे, पापम चेडानके मुक्जुप्त
But at the same time, God's divine nature in us helps us to overcome that sin.
अदेसमलो देवुनीका दायव नियमम इंटंटे, दायव स्वभावम इंटंटे, मनम विजयवंत्र
So, we have this kind of two different natures.
कबैटी रेंडु रकाला स्वभावलु मनलो चुस्तम
But our Lord didn't have this kind of two natures.
आइते मन प्रभु इलांटी रेंडु रकाला स्वभावलु लेट
Even though he was human, at the same time he was divine,
आयन देवुडै, मानवडै उन्नपुरु उन्ननु
But he was fully God.
आयन संपूर्णम का देवुड
Having no sin in him at any point of time.
तन जीवितलो येस समयानकुड़ा पापमु लेनिवाडिकु
Even during the times of temptations, he did not commit sin.
अनगा आयन शोधिंपा बडिननु, पापमु चेलेदु
That is our Lord Jesus Christ.
अदि मन प्रभु नेसु क्रिस्तु
That is the kind of person who gave you and me salvation.
अलांटी व्यक्ति चुरेंडी मीकु नाकु रक्षण इच्छन
That's why you and I can live victoriously because this kind of Lord Jesus is given to us as a gift.
ई प्रभु नेसु क्रिस्तु, मनकु वरमुगा युपट्टड़, अन्तिके मनमु जय जीवितम कलिकुंडन
Now, please look into the text.
चुरेंडी भागमलो
Verses 5, 1 to 5.
मधु दी आईद वच्चन
There are two components that would help us to understand this truth.
कबैटी सत्यनिग्रहिष्टकु रेंडु भागल उन्नाय क्र
Now, what we are going to see is the consequence of sin is defeat.
पापम योका परिणाममु, परियावश्रमु, ओटमिन
The first component is,
मधु दी भागमिन इंटे
Look into the facets that brought this consequence.
ई परिस्थितिकी तीसुकोच्चन पर विषयल चुरेंडी क्र
We will see the facets of sin.
पापम योका मुखमु, लेदा पापगम योका मुखकविलिकल जुस्तर
There are different colors of that one sin that is displayed here.
अनगा पापम योका रूपमु, लेदा रंगु, रकरकालके किड़ो चुस्तन
The second component is,
रेंडो भागमिन इंटे
Facts related to sin that led to defeat.
ओटमिकी कारणमयना वास्तव रूपमलो उन्ना पापम
The facets of sin,
पापम योका रूपम अन्कुन
And the facts of sin.
तर्वाता पापमलो उन्ना वास्तवल
Let us look into the first one.
रेंडी मधु जुद
The first component is facets of sin brought consequence.
ओटमिलो चुस्ते, पापम योका रूपमु, वारीको ओटम देस
And the consequence is defeat.
तानी परिणाममु, तानी परियावश्रमु ओटमिन
So, we need to look into God's word, how this has happened.
इदि एला तिरिकिन्दने देवुन वाक्यम चुरा
Now, these facets exhibit what sin is.
ई पापमु एट्लांटी देनदि चुपिंचरनके ई रूपम
Now, we are not just going to look into these facets and think that, oh, this is sin, but actually we are looking into sin as a dangerous thing.
अदि पापम अंटे इलागुन्तदा, अनिकेवलंदा रूपम मात्रण चुर्डंकादु, अलिए एन्तो अपायकर्मेन गमनिंच
Many believers have not gone too far to understand about sin.
पापन्नी ग्रहिंचुट्टा विषयमलो, विश्वासुलु गेको दुरम बोलेद
That's why we let go of certain things in our lives.
अन्तिके कुन्नी विषयल मन जीवितलो उद्लेस्त
Brothers and sisters, you and I are not called to that kind of casual living.
सहोदरे सहोदरलार, अलांटी चुलकना जीवितमु कोरकु मन पिलाबडलेद
We are committed.
मनमु समर्पिंच
We had a day when we went into the water,
मनमु आ नीटलो दिगिना ओका रोजु
And baptized.
बात्तिसंपन्दिन
And we came up,
बाइटकोच्चम
And we wanted to be people of God.
देवुनी प्रजल उन्डकोरिन
Not for a defeated life.
ओढ़िपोडानिक कादु
So, we have to be conscious of the fact that we have to be, cannot be casual about sin.
कबैटी पापम विषयमय एन्तो अलवोकका, लेदा चुलकनका उन्दे प्रसिक्तेलेदु मन जीत
Now, what does the text teach us about this particular facet?
कबैटी पापम योका रूपम गुरिंची, भागम एंज जब्तुन्दि
Now, here is the sevenfold description of it.
कबैटी पापम गुरिंच्नार एड़ा अंतला वरणन
Look at verse 1.
चुरेंडी मधु वच्चन
Chapter 7.
एड़ा वच्चम योश्वकरंदम
Verse 1.
मधु वच्चन
We are looking at unfaithfulness that is found here.
इक्कडा अविश्वास्यतनु मनु जुस्तनम, अपनमक्कनु जुस्तन
But the sons of Israel acted unfaithfully.
इसरायलीलु तिरुगुबौड्डचेसरी, लेदा वरु अपनमक्कन उन्नार अन्मडि क्र
Now, faithfulness
अनगा चुरेंडी नम्मकत्तम
Is completely opposite of unfaithfulness.
कबैटी नम्मकत्तम अन्नदि, अपनमक्कनको वेदरेक्पदंक
That is our God's character.
अदि मन देवुनीकु
The Bible says God is faithful.
चुरेंडी बाइबिलले नोसलम जुस्तम, देवुडु नम्मदगिन
And the Bible says God is faithful even if we are unfaithful.
मनमु नम्मदगिन वारमनु, आयन नम्मदगिन वारण
You know, there are many times I go to the Lord and say, Lord, even if I am unfaithful, Lord, you are faithful to me.
अनेकसालु नेनु प्रभानीन एन्ता अपनमक्कन उन्न, आयन नु नेनु नम्म
And I just pour out my heart to God thanking that he is faithful.
नेनु नम्मक्कनको उन्नावन जपी, ना हुदयान नियानके नोसल
Somebody please read Deuteronomy, chapter 7, verse 9.
चुरेंडी देचिसेरेना, दित्यपदेश कान्नम एड़ा वच्चम तोमि
Anybody who gets, please read.
देचिसेरेना तीश वच्चन
If you want to go home soon, read out loudly, clearly and fast.
इंटिकी तर्गा वेल्लालंटा, मरी गोट्टगा, तेर्गा, मरी बेगर्गा चोदम
कापटिनी देवरेगा इकोवा
7, 9.
दित्यपदेश कान्नम एड़ु येत्तोमि दम
कापटिनी देवरेगा इकोवा, तानी देवुनीकी, तनु प्रेमिंची, तना आब्नल नसरिंची नच्चुरु वारीकी, तनु निवदन किसरपर्च वाडुल, मे तरुलु वरसु, रुत्सुकु वाडुल, नम्मदिन देवुनीकी, तनी, तनु प्रेमिंचु वारीकी, प्रतिमानीकी सगिरमुगा नसिन
Notice the words faithful God.
चुरेंडी गमनिंचन इक्कडा नम्मदगिन देवु
And this is God's word.
ई देवुन वाक्यम
Let this truth be inscribed in our hearts today.
कबैटी सत्यमु मन हुदयमलो रास्कुन
I go out from the house of God today with this great conviction, God is faithful, the one who is living in me.
नालो निवसिंचु ई देवुडु नम्मदगिन वाडुवने सत्यान्नी, संपूर्णका ग्रहिंचना व्यक्तिन
That will keep you and me strong in faith.
चुरेंडी विश्वासमलो निनु ननु बलंगा उन्सुतुन्दि
Psalm 36.
मुपया आरोक इत्तन
Verse 5.
आईद वच्चन
Psalm 36, verse 5.
मुपया आरोक इत्तन आईद वच्चन, तीश वच्चन
Anybody
मुपया आरोक इत्तन निदी, आईद वच्चन
Your faithfulness reaches to the skies.
कबैटी नी सत्यसंधत्तम अंतरिक्षम अंतचुन्द, एला विश्वासित
I think it was the first time I was flying in the air.
मधु दी सारीने नु गाल्ले गुर्ताउन्न
Uh, not with my wings, but in the aeroplane.
Aeroplaneले वेल्ताउन्न
You know, my brother, who used to work in the Indian Airlines that time, he would give me a pass.
कबैटी आदिनालो, Indian Airlines Companyलो, मा सहोदरु पन्जेस्तुन
So, I was, for the first time, I got into the aeroplane.
कबैटी मधु दी सारी एरोप्लेन एक्कन
I think it was this Psalm that I was reading.
नेनु अपुरु इधे कीतन जातुन
And the aeroplane was in the clouds.
कबैटी आ प्लेनु मरी मेघाला मध्दिलो उन्दि
And what a refreshing words to read, that your faithfulness reaches the skies.
कबैटी नी सत्यसंधत्तम अंटे, आयन नम्मकत्तम अन्नदि, आकाशम अंतचुन्द
Anyone who has King James Version, would you please read?
King James Version, English Bible
Because I think that time I was reading King James Version.
अपुरु नेनु King James Version Bible चर्णटुन चदरण नेवरेना, King James Versionलो 36 Psalm
Verse 5. Under the clouds.
Under the clouds.
You know, the aeroplane normally glows through the clouds.
चुरेंडी विमानमु, मेघमु लोपलु चल्तद
And in that clouds, if you read these words, your faithfulness reaches the clouds.
कबैटी नी नम्मकत्तम आकाशम अंतचुन्द, आ मेघमल अंतचुन्द
And you know, if God is faithful, you cannot say, oh, that is God, but I am not God.
देवुडु नम्मदिन अंटे, आयन देवुडु, कबैटी नागल्तम, नेनु देवुन
But God wants us to be like him.
आइते मनमु देवुनीवाले, देवुनीकी पोलिन
Ephesians, chapter 5.
F A C, आईद वच्चम
Verse 1.
मधु दी वच्चन
Anybody gets, please read, keep reading.
तीश वच्चन, F A C, आईद ओकटी
So, we have to be imitators, that's what Apostle Paul exhorts believers.
कबैटी Apostle Paul विश्वासन इचरिस्तु, देवुनीकी पोलिन अंचकुन अंत
Galatians, chapter 4.
गलितीनाल्गो वच्चम
Verse 19.
पंतमिद वच्चन गलितीनाल्गु पंतमिद
Until Christ is formed in you.
क्रिस्तु स्वरूपम यंदे एर्पड्वरकु
That is the kind of life that you and I would desire for ourselves.
मनकोरकु अलांटी जीवमु कोरकोल्म
And that is the kind of prayer that we want to offer to the Lord with pouring out our heart for our people.
मन प्रजलकोरकु हुदयमलु कुमरिस्तु, मन प्रांतन अट्टिदिका उन्द
For our children,
मन बिल्लक
For our brothers and sisters,
मन सहोदरे सहोदर
For our parents,
मन तल्ल
This should be our prayer.
इलागु
Christ may be formed in you.
क्रिस्तु रूपम नीलो कलिकु
And that should be a cry from our heart, isn't it?
चुरेंडी मन हुदयमलो चोच्चे, मोरगा उन्द
And look at the third facet here.
चुरेंडी मूड़ा रूपम
Sorry, second one.
आ रेंडो दी
Transgression in verse 11.
पदकोण्डो वच्चन जुस्तम, वरु आतिक्रमिंचन
This we are seeing as a second facet, this is how sin looks like.
पापमु चुरेंडी ई रूपमलो उन्तदनदि, मनमु रेंडो भागमु जुस्तन
You know, one of the words that is used in the English Bible for sin is transgression.
कबैटी पापन्नी किंकोका परियावश्रमुका, आतिक्रममु अन्नदि English Bibleलो राय
Now, what is transgression?
मर आतिक्रम अंटे
You are crossing the limit.
अन्ते क्रमानी तप्पुत
In Telugu, probably we have only one, in Indian languages, in other words, we have only one word.
कबैटी मरी Teluguलाई तो मनको ओक्टे पदम अन्पिस्त
But in English, because of the translation from Hebrew and Greek, we have different words that are used.
हेब्री भाषनुची तर्जुमा चेसे, विधानमलो तेल, Englishलो वेरी वेरी पदल
And this describes what kind of sin that they have specifically committed.
कबैटी निदिष्ठंगा वरु एट्लांटी पापम जेसरने क्र
So, this sin has, it looks like transgression.
कबैटी इदि वोका आतिक्रममुका अन्पिस्त
If you cross the limits, cross the rules,
अदुपु तप्पते, नियमम तप्पते
That means you have sinned.
अन्ते नु पापमु चेसी उन्नाव
You know, I keep seeing police here on the streets, keep clicking photos.
कबैटी पोलिसलो, ट्रैफिक पोलिसलो फोटोल देस्ताउन रदा चुस्तन
It was not there when I was growing.
नेनु पे परिगुत्नपुरु, अदि
But the technology has grown so much, they have, all the police people have cameras.
सांकेतिकता बापरिगुपे, नी पोलिसलो उपकैमरा बट्कु
And I was watching and, you know, why are they clicking photo?
येन्दु फोटोल देस्तन रने गमनिस्त
Something, some wrong as the people have transgressed.
येवरो, मरी उन्ना नियमानी, दाटिन
Maybe not a helmet.
बट हेलमेट वेस्कोले
Or maybe not a mask.
लेदा मास्क लेद
Something transgressed and they have been stopped.
एदोका क्रमानी, नियमानी, वरु मीरन
I was in Lucknow riding a scooter without a helmet.
Lucknowलो हेलमेट लेकुंद, स्कूटर नाड्विस्त
And the police stopped me.
पोलिसर आपे
I, the police said, where is your helmet?
पोलिसर नर्गे एदा हेलमेट एदा ने
Actually, the helmet happened to be with me, but I was hanging on the scooter in the
Helmet नातोने उन्दि, कानी स्कूटर को दगलिच
Then he said, why didn't you put your helmet?
Helmet तु तलके स्कूल कदा यान अडिन
I said, मेरा बाल कराबो जायेंगे अगर राग
ना झुट्टु कराबो, पाड़ेपो देने, अन्तिके वेस्कोले दर ने तलक
And then he said,
आप अपने बालोंकी चिन्ता ज्यादा करते हैं नी, एवं टिकलगुन्च चिन्ते एकुद नीको
But somehow he let me go.
येदो विदानचेता बम्बिच
You know, we transgress somewhere or the other.
कबैटी इलागु येदोका विधानमलो मनमु तप्पुत
So, this sin is known according to verse 11.
कबैटी पदकोण्डो वच्चन प्रकर्मी, पापमु
Then again in verse 11,
मरला पदकोण्डलो
The third facet is,
मूड़ा रूपम जुस्ते
Stealing.
दो, शपितम मनदि दोंगिली
They have stolen.
दोंगिलिंचन
Man, you know, look into man's heart here.
चुरेंडी मानव नी हुदयम चुरेंडी क्र
Greedy, covetousness.
दुराशा, पेराशा
Can't God give much more than that?
अन्तकंटे एकुआ, देवुडिस्तर कदा ने अडित
Do you really have to steal?
निजंगा दोंगिलिंचा, साउस्रम उन्द
I remember my son, maybe at the age of four or five,
नाकुडुकु नाकुट्तुन्दि, नाल्गे समस्त
He came from the school.
स्कूलन जोच्च
He showed me his answer paper.
तन आंसर पेपर जुपिच
Then when he calculated the marks, there were, you know, difference of two marks.
He is looking in this manner, he is angry.
यहो वा इसरायल में द कोपिन्चनु वारी देवड़ू चुड़गणे कोपिचनार्.
And how, uh, look at the second fact in verse four.
नाल गोच्चनु रेडा वास्तव उच्चरण्डि.
Fled from enemies.
वारी एदुटा निलवलेका पारिपोइरि.
It is not just Achan who fled, but it is the whole congregation, the whole Israel fled.
आकानु ओकड़े पारिपोले दंडि, इकड़ा चुश्नेडले ते इसरायल अंदर कुड़ा, वारी एदुटा निलवलेका पारिपोइरि.
One man's sin here affects the whole community.
ओक्का व्यक्ति पापम जेस्ते आ समाजम अन्ततिकी प्रभाव.
Now, this famous commentator, F B Meyer, says like this.
कबटि गोपा व्याख्यानकार्ता एफ बी मायर इलागन्नाट.
One Israelite only had transgressed.
अतिक्रम चेसिन्दी ओक्का इसरायल युडु.
And yet it said that the children of Israel have committed transgression.
आइते इसरायल अंदरू पापम चेसी उन्नारू.
He further says like this.
इनका अंटाड़ मुंदुकु.
Not one of us stand alone.
मानलु ये ओक्कर वंटरगार निलबडले.
We cannot sin without insensibly affecting the spiritual condition of our fellows.
कबटि माना इतर सहोदरला आत्मय स्थितिनी सुन्नितंगा परिगणिंचकुंटे ऐला पापम जेस्ता.
We cannot grow cold without lowering the temperature of all contagious arts.
कबटि चुरण्डि, माना कनबड़े ई व्यादिलागसोकेविट अन्निटिनी मानम चोलकनगा तिसकोकुड़.
We cannot pass up and without lifting others.
कबटि इतरलानु यति पटकुंडा मानम दाटिपोकुड़दु.
Now let us look into the third fact here.
रेंडी मुड़ो वास्तव उच्चदाम.
And that is enemies struck down the Israelites.
इसरायल इलानु शत्रुलु तरिमिनार्.
Verse five.
आइदो वच्चनु.
Enemies.
शत्रुलु.
Are overtaking now.
हाँ, वीर मिधिको वच्चेस्नारि कुड़.
What a sad thing, isn't it?
एता विचारकरमंडि.
We have a great promise in Joshua chapter one.
योश्वकन्द मोटाजनु गोपा वाग्दानमुंदि.
Given to Joshua.
योश्वकीबड़ि.
I will be with you.
ने निक तोड़गालु.
Like Moses, I was with him, I will be with you.
ने मोशे कु तोडे इन्नले तु, नीकु नो तोडे इन्नले.
God is there to give victory for Israel.
इसरायल की विजयमिन देवड़ू उन्नाडु.
But look at verse five, what's happening.
आइते एडो वच्चम आइदो वच्चनु चुरण्डि एम अतुंद.
Fourthly.
नाल गोच्चनु.
Hearts were melted.
वारी गुंडलु करिगि नीर आयपोये.
Those are the facts about sin.
कबटि पापम गुंचना वास्तवाली लागुन्नाइकड़.
What a tragic experience of Israelites.
इसरायल विशादकरमेना विचारकरण परिस्थिति अनुभव उच्चरण्डि.
When it took seven years to conquer Canaan.
येडु समस्याल बट्टिनी कनानंता आक्रमिंचकुड़ा.
This is the only defeat in their lives.
वारी जीवतालो, वारु चविचुस्ना वोटमी दोक्के.
So the situation has become so grim now.
कबटि इबुड़ परिस्थिति इन्तो दैनियंगम.
According to the story, this is the story that people are defeated because of their sin.
वारी पापमुनु बट्टी प्रजलु ओडीपोइरि अन्ना परिस्थिति.
But as we have seen in the beginning, God doesn't want us to live in a defeated life.
आइते मानम वोटमीलोने जीविंचना ने प्रभु कोरडु.
Would there be a defeat in Christian life?
क्रिस्तो जीवतालो वोटमीलोने.
In a believer's life?
विश्वासी जीवतामुन्.
Yes.
उन्दि.
When you, uh, when you, uh, when you let sin come into your life, then that is a defeat for you.
पापमुनी जीवतालो प्रवेशिंचुड़ा कनमतिस्ते, अप्पड़े नु वोडपना.
But do you have to live in that defeated life?
मारी अलागे वोटमीलोने नु उन्डाला.
Let us look to verses six through fifteen.
रेंडी आर नुचि पदिहान्वर्षनु चुद्दाम.
Calling on God leads to overcome defeat.
देवुनिकी मोरपेटुटा वलना, वोटमीनी जेन्चकलमु.
Now that is in the story here.
इकड़ा कथलो कुड़ा द जरिंदि.
And this story is a real story.
इदि निजंगा जरिंदि.
That gives us timeless principles or timeless truth, so that you and I can practice on, uh, today's date is March.
Twenty.
Huh?
Nineteen.
March nineteen twenty twenty-two, this is very real.
कबटि चुरण्डि, अप्पड़े पुड़ो रायवडना ई विश्याल अन्नी कुड़ा, अवी समयानिकी कालातीतमैना वनमाता, मार्च पंतम मिदि इरवै, रिंगवैले रिवैले रिंगलो इपुड़ मानम दिन वत्तिस्ता.
Calling on God leads to overcome defeat.
कबटि देवुनिकी मोरपेटुटा वलना, वोटमीनी जेन्चकलमु.
Now let us look into two components again to make us understand.
इकड़ा गुड़ अर्धन जेस्कुन रेंडु भाग अल्चदाम.
Regarding calling on God to overcome defeat.
पापमुनु जेन्च, लेदा वोटमीनी जेन्चटकु, देवुनिकी मोरपेटुटा.
You and I don't have to live a defeated life.
अंटे नीवुने नु ई वोटमीलोने उन्डकुड़दु.
The first component is.
मधित भागम.
Pleading over the circumstances.
परिस्थितिनी बट्टी मोरपेटड़म.
Verse six through nine.
आर नुचि तमिल जूस्तम.
Secondly.
रेंडा दि.
Process of consecration.
अनगा परिशुद्ध पर्चुकुनु विधानम.
Now you cannot leave these components in order to understand this truth.
ई सत्यालु अर्धन जेस्कुलंटे विटनी विचपटकुड़दन.
Process of consecration.
परिशुद्ध पर्चुकुनु ते विधानम.
Verses ten through fifteen.
पदि 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 मश्कान.
Firstly.
मधित दि.
It should be pleading over the circumstances.
परिस्थितिनी बट्टी मानम मोरपेटड़म.
Now we already read this portion in the beginning.
इन्दाके आरंभम्मल मनी भागम जदुकुन्नाम.
Now it is in verse six through nine now.
आर नुचि तमिल लम चूस्ते.
Now look at this conjunction here in verse six, I don't know how it is in Telugu, but the word then, the first word.
कबटि मानक आइते लेदु, आ तेलुगुलो, आइते नालगुलो काबट्टी अनुमानम जूस्ता मकड़ा.
Then is the conjunction in verse six.
अनुबंध पदम मकड़ा, काबट्टी.
After this word then, can somebody read in King James Version please?
कबटि किंग जेम्स वर्शनल चदरण्डि, आरो वच्चनु, sixth verse, Joshua seven six, King James Version.
Then Joshua, is it then Joshua? And Joshua.
And Joshua.
You see, this, these Hebrew words like, uh, can be, to bring the conjunction, we can use and or so or then, these are the words can be used.
कबटि हेब्री भाषलो, ओका भागन इन्को भागन कनुसंधानो जेडनिकी काबट्टी.
So what we see is and, that means, uh, it is an adding word, it is a connecting word in here.
तरुवाता लेदा तदुपरी अने, आ अनुसंधानमेना अनुबंध वच्चन जूस्तनाम.
When these people have sinned.
ई प्रजलु पापम जेस्ना पुडु.
They are not calling for a committee meeting.
आ, वर अंदर गल्लो, मीटिंग बेटुंदा मनटरले.
They are not calling for a evaluation meeting.
लेदा अंदरम दिनी विश्लेषिस्ताम, अनान्कोटले.
That is the task of our political people.
राज्यकेनायुक्त जेस्यपनि.
When they are defeated, they call for a meeting.
पार्टी ओडुपोगाने, मीटिंग कुविल्लिस्कुंटा.
Those meetings can keep going on every five years.
आ मीटिंग प्रति आई समस्याल गोसर जरुतुंदा.
But how much they implement those evaluation facts, we don't know.
वार विश्लेषिंचना वास्तवाली इन्ता आचरणले बेटरमानक देले.
But here.
आदि इकड़ा.
It is different.
ई वेर्गा उन्दि.
What are they doing here?
एन जेस्तुनरंडा वाली इकड़ा.
It shows that the leader of God's army to come before him, before God in humility.
इन्तो तग्गिंचुकुन्ना वाडे, आ देवुनी प्रजला साइन्यादिपति मुंदुकोस्तनाड़, मधित टक.
The leader of God's army.
अनगा देवुनी ओक्का साइन्यानिकतिपति.
You know, that is how God has appointed Joshua.
देवड़ू योश्वा अलावु निमिंचना इकड़ा.
Now that's what we see in this portion.
ई भागम लेदे जूस्ता.
Look at verse six.
आर वच्चनु चुरण्डि.
The kind of cost that a leader has to pay.
नायकु एलांटी करीदु कटाल जूस्ता.
That kind of cost that the head of the family has to pray when there is some kind of defeat in the family.
कुटुम्मम्मलो एलाइना वोटमीन्ना पुडु, कुटुम्ब यजमानी, इन्ता मात्रम बाधपडाल जूस्ते चुरण्डि.
When there is some kind of defeat in your personal life because of sin, what is that you have to do?
पापनी बट्टी नी व्यक्तिकति जितुलो, वोडीपोइन्ना पुडु, नी एन चेयाले नदि.
Now this is what Joshua would do.
योश्वा इदा जेस्नाड़िक.
Tore his clothes and fell on the earth on his face.
बट्टलु चिंपुकुनी, नेला मीदा मुकमुलु मोपुकुन.
And they put dust on their heads.
तावताल, तालमीदम.
You know, all these actions, all these verbs speak about humility.
कबटि तालमीदम, मट्टी बोसकुनी, दुम्मु बोसकुने, अन्नी गुड़ तग्गिंपुकु, दूली बोसकुन.
We don't do all that now.
इपुड़ मानवी अनिच्याम.
But what we do is.
मानवी जेस्ताम.
Our heart is pouring out.
माना हृदयमुनु कुमरिस्ताम.
We are torn apart in the heart.
अनगा हृदयमुलो, विरिगिपना.
And as our heart is torn apart.
माना हृदयम चिनिपना टाइपु.
As we are putting the dust on our heart.
अनगा माना हृदयमुलु दूली बोसकुन.
And, and the tears are rolling our eyes.
माना कडलनिंदा नीलु जारुतुंद.
We are expressing our humility before God.
अट्लु देवुन एदुटा माना तग्गिंपुनु व्यक्त.
Lord, we have failed.
प्रभावम ओडिपना.
Father, we have committed sin.
तन्री में पापम जेस्ना.
This is not what you, my heavenly father is desiring, but it has happened in my life.
परलोकपु तन्रिगानी, कोरेटलेदु, आइनानु इदिना जीवतान जरिंदि अंताम.
Then that's what is happening here.
इकड़ा गुड़ देवे जूस्तनाम.
There is another scholar by name George Bush, who wrote a book on Joshua.
George Bush.
Yes, Joshua.
जॉर्ज बुश अने व्याख्यानकार्तु गुड़ा, मारी योश्वकन्द में व्याख्यान राष्णद.
He says like this.
आइनी लागन्नाट.
Rending clothes, beating the breast, and tearing the hair, putting dust on the head, and falling down prostrate have always been among eastern nations the unusual mark of deep, deep affliction and distress.
कबटि वारी बट्टलु चिंपुकोड़मु, अरे दिगा मुकमुलु मोपुकोड़मु, तालमीदा दूली बोसकोड़मु, आ, मिले गोनी बट्टलु कटुकोड़मु, ई वन्नी कुड़ा इन्तो लोताइना प्रघाडमाइना पश्चात तापमु देवुन एदुटा चुपिंचना.
Now the circumstances were disillusioning.
कबटि इबुड़ परिस्थितिल अन्नी कुड़ा तार्मर रेपने.
Now defeat is too much to take.
अंटे ई वोटमी, आंगीकरिंचले निदिगाउंदि.
But God, we know that he has promised victory.
आइते विजयमुनु देवड़ू वाग्दानम जेस्नाट.
But here is a defeat.
आइते इकड़ा वोटमुंदि.
There is a collective of prayer of people in this text.
कबटि भागमुलो सामूहिकंगा, वर अंदर कलिसी प्रार्थन जेस्नार्.
That teaches us a timeless truth.
अनगा चुरण्डि, कालातीतमैना सत्यमु नेर्पिस्ता.
Are we as God's people crying out to God as community of people?
कबटि देवुनी प्रजलम्गा, मानम अंदरमु कलिसी, इलांटी प्रार्थना, मोर जेस्तना.
They looked around.
वाल पक्कन जूस्कुनार्.
There is a defeat.
चुट्टू जूसी, वोटमी जूस्ते.
We look around.
मानम चुट्टू जूस्तना.
The land that we should be possessed for God and for God's glory is now, we see so many other things that are happening around us.
देवुन कोरुकु संपादिंचुकुना वल्लसिना, मान, मान चुट्टून्ना वन्नी कुड़ा, वेरेवे एलिपने.
What do we see?
एन जूस्तना.
Presence of sin.
पापम ओक्का सन्नी.
Sensuality.
सुन्निततम जूस्तनाम.
Absence of, absence of spirituality.
अनगा आत्मलो तीव्रते लेनी परिस्थिति जूस्तनाम.
There is no sincerity.
अनगा यदारतते लेनी परिस्थिति.
What should God's people do?
मारी देवुन प्रजल लेन्चले.
Second Chronicles, chapter seven.
रेंडा वतिनु तान्तम लेडो.
Verse fourteen.
पद्धनाल गोच्चनु.
We all know this verse maybe by memory.
कबटि मानक अंदर कंटस्ना.
If my people confess their sins.
ना प्रजलु तमु पापमुलु ओपुकुने.
If my people humble themselves and come before God, confess sins.
ना पीरु पेट्टाबड़ीना प्रजलु, तमुतम तग्गिंचुकुनी प्रार्थना जेसी.
You know, we have a great promise that God would heal the land.
देवड़ू आ, वारी देशमुनु सस्ता.
He will forgive the sins.
वारी पापम चमिस्ताना.
I was, I, I heard a very powerful prayer, I think it is over the YouTube by Brother Boxing.
करे सर, बख्सिंग आरु चेसना शक्तियों तोना प्रार्थना YouTube ले विन्ना.
I couldn't see him on face, but you know, I'm sure that he was quoting this verse by memory.
आना मुकमेतु चुले, काने ई वचना ने, आना कंटस्तो.
He was pouring out his heart, pleading according to this verse.
तना हृदयमुनु कुमरिस्ती वचनो जप्तनाड़.
I think that's what is the answer for every believer today.
ईरोजु प्रतिविश्वासी किदे जवाब अनकुंटान्.
Whatever growth we have taken in our lives.
माना जीवतामुलो, एलांटी एदुकुले मानम पुड़ना.
Brothers and sisters, if we don't have this humility that brings, that drags us to God, then what is the spirituality in our life?
सहोदर, सहोदरलारा, देवुन एदुकु, मानम वीडो पड़कपोते, इनका ये विदम्ग एदुकुता मानम.
Second, second component here.
रेंडा भागमु जूस्नेडले ते इकड़ा.
It should be consecration.
परिशुद्ध पर्चपड़ले.
Verses ten to fifteen.
पदि नुचि पदिहान्वर्षनु जूस्ता.
Again, two components here.
माला इकड़ा रेंडु भागलु.
Number one.
मधित दि.
God responds.
देवड़ू प्रतिस्पनिंचाडु.
Second component is.
रेंडा भागमेंट अंटे.
God reveals.
देवड़ू बैलपर्चाड़.
Look at verse ten.
पद वच्चनु चुरण्डि.
And please observe this verse that God looks at Joshua's postures.
कबटि योहोश्वा ओक्का परिस्थिति एलाउन्नाड़.
No, the posture, that means it's.
एलासास्तांगपड़ी, देवुन सन्नीदलो, तनुतानु, दीनुड़गा उन्नाडु, आ स्थितिनी जूस्तनाड़.
Don't you think that's what we see in verse ten? Somebody please read.
पद वच्चुलो, योहोवा, योहोश्वा तिट्टनु, लेम्मु, नी वेला इकड़ा मुकमु, नेला मोपुकुंदु.
He said, yeah, he saw his even postures.
कबटि तना मुकमु, नेला मेदा पड़िउंडितम जूस्नेड.
God who can count our hair, he also knows everything about us, what position we are, what postures we are in.
माना तालवेंटुगले, किन्पगले देवड़ू, मानम एलांटी, पा, परिस्थितिल उन्नाम, मुकमु, नेला बेटुंदा जूस्ता.
So he says, rise up.
कबटि लेम्मु.
And this occurs two times.
रेंडु साल जरुतुंदि.
In verse ten and also verse thirteen.
पदि लो, पदमुड़ लो गुड़ा.
Rise up.
नी वुलेची.
To do what?
एन जेयाले.
Consecrate.
परिशुद्ध पर्चपड़ले.
Consecrate to what?
देनिकोरुकु.
To remove certain things from you, in your midst.
नीलोनुंडि वाटनी तोलगिंच्चकु.
And when you remove, what should you do?
मेर तोलगिंच्चकु अप्पड़े एन जेयाले.
Verse twelve.
पनेडो वच्चनु.
And verse fifteen.
पदिहान्वर्षनु.
Destroy them.
वाट निर्मूलम चेयाले.
That is what it is saying.
आदे जेस्यप्तनाड़.
Rise up means.
लेवड़म अंटे.
Not just come up out of your place and you know, be normal.
यदो नेला मेदा पडुकुन्ना वाडु, मुकमेस्कुनु नोड़, पाइकलाड़.
No, you have something to do now.
अंटे यदो पनी चेयाले.
Consecration is needed, required.
शुद्ध जेसुकुने परिस्थिति आउस्रम.
And then consecration has to be part of this removal.
परिशुद्ध पर्चपड़ुटलो, निर्मूलम चेडमकप.
Remove those things from your life.
मी जीवतानु वाटनी तोलगिंच्चकुवाली.
It is hard.
इदि कष्टम.
It is not easy.
अंतसुल्बंकाल.
For the flesh.
अनगा शरीरानिकी.
But by the spirit of God.
आदि देवुन आत्मचेता.
He who made Jesus to rise, the same spirit works in us, that's what the apostle Paul says.
कबटि अपोसिन्ड पावलु अंटाडु, क्रिस्तुनु लेपिना, आ देवुनी आत्मन अंटाड़.
Second component now.
रेंडा भागम.
God's reason.
देवड़िच्या कानम.
Verse fifteen.
पदिहान्वर्षनु.
It is transgression of the covenant.
इदि निबंधनु मीरिना दुष्कार्यमु.
During the time of baptism, we have made a covenant with God.
चुरण्डि, बाप्तिसंपुण्डिना पुडु, मानम देवुन तो निबंधन जेस्कुन.
What is the meaning of covenant?
निबंधन अंटे अर्थमेंटि.
It is, it is, you know, making an agreement with God.
अंटे देवुन तो ओक्का ओपुदला जेस्कुन, ओड़म्बड़का जेस्कुन.
From here after, I am going to live for you.
इकनुचि नीकोरुक जीविस्तानु मान.
That is the kind of consecration.
आदि इकड़ा परिस्थिति.
That is the kind of covenant.
अलांटी निबंधन.
Making a agreement with God.
देवुन तो ओक्का ओप्पन्ना जेस्कुड़म.
So that has to be brought in again.
इदि मरला तेस्कुन रावल इकड़ा.
Did these people not do a covenant at the time of circumcision?
सुन्नति पुण्डिना पुडु, विर निबंधन चेसुकुले, आई प्रजलु देवुन तो.
You know, Israel have, all go through circumcision.
इसरायल अंदर कुड़ा, सुन्नति अने प्रक्रिया वेल्टा.
And that is a covenant.
आदा निबंधन.
Didn't we have to do a covenant during the time of baptism?
बाप्तिसंपुण्डिना पुडु, मानम गुड़, मारी निबंधन चेयाले.
We have done.
चेस्यम.
But why now?
मारी इपुड़ एंडुकु.
Every time you sin, you have to come with a confession.
कबटि नु पापम चेसिना पुड़े, ओपुदलो तो रावले.
You cannot ignore saying that, okay, my past sins are forgiven, present sins are forgiven, and the future sins are forgiven, so I'll keep silent, no, that is not the way.
कबटि गतपापालु, प्रसुतपापालु, भविष्यतपापालु निक चमिंचपड़ने, कबटि, इपुड़ ने एन जेयालस्ना, पन्नले, अन्नले.
Yes, God has forgiven our past sins.
अनुमानम लेदु, गतपापालु चमिंचना.
Present sins.
प्रसुतपापालु.
And the future sins.
भविष्यतपापालु.
But when we sin.
आइते पापम चेस्ना.
God is wanting us to commit ourselves, do a consecration.
ओका परिशुद्ध पर्चपड़े, प्रक्रिया गुंडा, मानम वेलाले ने देवड़ू कोड़ता.
Now the third and the last focal conviction that a believer should have.
मुड़ो देच्वरदी विश्वासी कुंडवल्लसिना, आ, मारी, आ, रूपम.
That will take us into sixteen through twenty-six.
कबटि आदि पदहार नुचि इरवैयर वच्चनु कुल्लिस्कु.
Confrontation with sin that caused defeat should be dealt.
पाप, आना वोटमीकी कारणमाइना पापनी एदुरुकोड़म जरगाल्सिने.
Verse sixteen through twenty-five here. Verse 16 through 25 here
पदहार नुंची इरवयदल मान जूस्त
There should be a face-to-face confrontation with sin that has caused your defeat
मुकामुकित्का पापानी यदुरुकोली इदि इनका दानी दवारे वोटम
Like David did in Psalm 51
याबै गुडके तले दाव
I have confessed against thee
नेनु नीकु विरोधमगा नेनु नेने पापम जेसित
So again, components here, two components
इकड़ा रिंडु भागाल जूस्त
Firstly
मध्यतिदी
16 to 25
पदहार नुंची इरवय
The leader's action
नायकु जेसिन पनि
Joshua doesn't remain silent because of this time, he has to take an action
योहोश्वा इकड़ा मावनमगा उन्डलेदु, वोक पन्नी तलावेट्कुण
He doesn't remain composed because he has an action to be, action to take place
यदो कदलकुणा निश्चेष्टुड़गा आटला उन्डुपोलेदु, वोक पन्नी चेतबट्कुण इकड़ा
Who else, who else would be more grieved and troubled than a leader?
कविती वोक नायकुण कंटे अधिकमगा दुकिंच्छुवाडु एवड़म टाडिपड़
A prompt action
अनगा तक्षणमे तीस्कुण
With an orderly manner
अंटे कादु क्रमंगा तीस्कुण
Verse 16
चुरंडी पदहार वोच्छन
Again, begins with a conjunction there
अकड़ा गुड़ा अनसन्दान पदम, अनबंद पदम जूस्त
Now, listen to this carefully
जात विन्न विष्ण
Promptness is not a hurried action
अंटे तक्षणमे अंटे तोंदरपडी कादि
Don't think that promptness means you have to do hurriedly
वेंटने जेलांटे तोंदरपडी चेडवानी काद
Instead, promptness is a timely action with priorities in the right place
कविती सरियान विधानमुलो देन की प्राधानत निव्वाली अनि गुर्तिंची तक्षणमे
Let me repeat
मला जप्त
Promptness is not a hurried action
तक्षणमे तीसुकोडम अंटे तोंदरपडी चेसे
But promptness in Christian experience is timely action with priorities in right place
समयानिकी प्राधानत इव्वडा इच्छे विष्ण लु दृष्टिलो बेट्कुनी तीसुकोवल्सिना कार्यमु तक्षण
The second component is
रिंडव भागमु चुरंडी
Process the action to find who is the culprit
यवरु नेरस्तुडु अन्नदी गुर्तिंचे
Verse 17, 18 and 19
पदिहे डु पज्जन दी पन्तमल जूस्त
Particulars of falling into sin according to verse 21
इरवय गुडके वोच्छनलो पापम यला पडिपड
You will see exactly, we have already read that, we have seen how this has exactly happened
इदि वर्क चदेस्यमु इदे यला जरिगिन्द मानु तेल
Now sin is exposed
इबुड़ पापम पट्ट
Bible doesn't cover up sins
बाइबलु पापानी कपपेटदु
That is a wonderful book
अद्भुतमान बस
Many people may object to this, many people may argue on this, why Bible is saying all of this?
ओडीपा, एन्दुकंडी बाइबल अंते जप्त अदि कोणतमंद अपेंतरपड़च्चु राध
Because God doesn't want to hide any of those things, he exposes
देवुड़ ये पापानी दाझपेट्टड़णी बट्टवाल
So it is exposed here
इकड़ा बट्टवाल
A shameful act has now come before the whole public
सिग्गु क्रमान अन पनी प्रजलु मुंडु कोचेसिन
Verse 21
इरवय गुडके वोच्छन
Please remember the words of the Lord
देवुनी माटल इकड़ा गम्निंच
Yeah, you can go home and read Luke chapter 8, verse 17
लुकास्वार्थ येन्विदी पदिहे डु इंटिकल्च
Now, secondly
रिंडव दी
Covetousness is the thing that we see in verse 21
इरवय गुडके वोच्छनलो आशिंची लेद
And then the verse says, took, he took
तीसुकोडमु अंटाड
Verse 21
इरवय गुडके वोच्छन
So firstly, saw it
चूसाडु मध्यतिका
Then coveted
रिंडव आशिंचाडु
And took
मुड़ो तीस्कुण
All this is showing us that this person is yielding to the fleshly acts
कविती आ शरीर कार्यमुनकु ई व्यक्ति तनुतानु लोपर्चुकोडम जूस्न
Then we come to the end, as we come to the end, we see the punishment here
कविती चिवरिगा मुकिम्पुलो शिक्षा
That is the consequence of sin
कविती पापम योक्का
Verses 22 to 25
इरवय रिंडु इरवय वचन जूस्त
Again, in verse 22, we see the conjunction, the word so is mentioned, the connecting word
अप्पुडु अनि तेलुगुलो मान के इरवय रिंडो वोच्छन
Brothers and sisters, the timeless principle is the Lord has the antidote
कविती कालातीतमाईना निवम अंटे देवुनी देखर विरुगु
The anger of God is gone
देवुनी कोपमु वेलिपणि
But what remains here?
आइथे इकड़ा निलिच्पणि
Do the proper observation in chapter 7
सरिका गम्निंचन रण्डी एडो जलमेरु
Observe it
गम्निंच
What do we see in this portion?
ई भागमु ने जूस्न
There is a memorial
इकड़ा वोक नापकार्तमुंदी
You know, sin is gone
पापम बोइंदी
But the memorial remains
काने नापकार्तमुंदी
That doesn't mean that God is, you know, is not forgetting your sins
अंटे देवुड़ नी पापाल वोपु मर्चपोड
God doesn't forget your sin
देवुड़ नी पापाली मर्चपोड
But he will not remember your sins
नी पापाली नापकम जेस्कोड
That's what the Bible says
बाइबल अदि अप्त
He will not, he will remember your sins no more
नेनु मी पापल एन्ने नापकम जेसुकुण
But why is this memorial here?
मरी इकड़ी नापकार्तम इदुकु
It is a reminder to the rest of God's people throughout the churches that you be careful because of what has happened to Akhen
आकान विष्ण लो येमी जरिगिन्दी अन्नदी मानु तलपोसुकुन्टु दानी नापकमुलो बुन्चुक
And John the apostle in the New Testament unfolds, talking about this antidote
कविती विरुगुगुरिंची अपोसन योहानु कत्तन निबंधला दिनुच्छु
And what does he say?
एमंटाडु
We have an advocate
मानकु प्रतिवादी, उत्तरवादी उन्नाड
And when you look into chapter 1
मध्य वज्जम जूस्त
He is talking about the word of life
जीव वाक्यमुनु गुर्चिन
And you come to chapter 2
रिंडव वज्जम गोस्त
He is talking about the advocate
अकड़ा उत्तरवादी
The word of life is telling you and me that Jesus is the advocate
कविती जीव वाक्यमु नीकु नाकु एन जेपुतुन अंटे ये से मन उत्तर
The word in Greek that is used here is paraclete
कविती ग्रीक भाषलो paraclete याने पदम राय
Paraclete means a person alongside to help
paraclete याने पदम अंटे वोक व्यक्ति तो इनको व्यक्ति
So, our advocate in heaven as a high priest is pleading on behalf of his children
प्रधान याजकुड़गा तन बिट्टल पक्षमगा देवुन योद्धा परलोकमुलो मानकोरु उत्तर
It happened with Peter, the Lord prayed for Peter
पेतुर गुड़ा प्रभु पेतुर पक्ष
And today, our Lord is interceding for his people
ईरोज प्रभु कुड़ा तन प्रजल पक्ष विग्नापन जेस
Advocate, he advocates that we should not sin
मानम पापम चेयोकुड़दु अनि मानकोरु विग्नापन जेस
And this advocate is the propitiation for sin
कविती ई उत्तरवादी मानकोरु प्रायस्चित्त
And this advocate lives in a place where there is no sin
पापमु लेनी स्थलमुलो ई उत्तरवादी निवज
That's why he can help us with all power
अंदिके अधिक शक्तितो सम्पूर्ण
That's why we don't want to believe in these so-called gurus
अंदिके गुरुलु अन्य वार्तमानु
Who can claim to say that, you know, you will come out of sin if you take, you know, dip in such and such place
पलाना स्थलमुलो मेरु मुनुगुते मीकु पापाल बोत अनि जेपुता उन्तर
Why?
इदुकु
Because they are still living in the place of sin
इनका दे पाप स्थलमुलो नेवल
No, we want a person who has come from the place where there is no sin
पापमु लेनी स्थलमु जोचन व्यक्ति
In John's Gospel, chapter 3, verse 31 onwards, we see that Jesus came from above
यसु कृष्टु परलोकमु दिग्वच्छिन योहान्स्वार्थम मुड़
From the place where there is no sin
पापमु लेनी स्थलमु
And he went back to the same place where there is no sin
मरला पापम लेनी स्वान
So brothers and sisters, we have a perfect God and perfect advocate who can advocate for believers
कविती परिपूर्णमान देवुड़ु, परिपूर्णमान उत्तरवादी, विश्वासल पक्ष नापन
So, let's go back to the questions that we began in the beginning
कविती आरंभमुलो मान जूस्न प्रश्न
Can a believer sin?
विश्वासी पापम चेगल
Is, should there be any defeat in life?
असला विश्वासीकु जियुतमुलो वोटम उन्डवच्छ
Is there not consequence of sin?
पापानीकु परियावशन लेद
When Israelites sinned, there was a consequence
इसरैलु पापम जेस्टे परिणामुंदिक
But when they turned to God
मरी वार देवुन वेप्त्रीन
When they confess sins
पापाल वोपुकुन
And the unfolding of this truth that becomes so clear by looking at this advocate who is the propitiation for us
मानकु प्रायस्चित्तम जेसिन, उत्तरवादी निगुरिंचन, सत्यालनी मानु गुर्तिंचन वारमे वीटनी चुस
Brothers and sisters, tonight we need not go to beds with some kind of condemnation
शिक्षा यदो उन्दी, शिक्षाविदिनामी यदो उन्दी याने मान रात्र पडुकोस
We are not under the condemnation, Romans chapter 8, verse 1
रोमा येन्विदी ओटी प्रकरम इकम मानु शिक्षाविदिकिन्द
Therefore, there is no condemnation for them who live by the spirit
कविती आत्मचेत नडपिंच बड़े वारीका शिक्षाविदिलो लेरु
The reason is we are justified
इनका नमनु नीतिमंद्रा तीच्छु
Past tense
गतम
Justified
नीतिमंद्रा तीच्छु
We are being, we are saved
रक्षिच्छु
We are justified
नीतिमंद्रा तीच्छु
And also glorified
अंटे, अंटे कादु महिम पर्च
One day we will be in that eternity
वोक रोज नीतित्तुल वेल्त
And God is seeing end from the beginning
कविती देवुड़ अंतमुन आदिन
So even glorification is in the past tense
कविती इपुड़ आयनकु महिम पर्च
But for you and for me, every day we can thank the Lord and worship him. Lord, one day I am going to be glorified
वोक रोज नेनु महिम पर्च बड़तानु, देवा अंदुकाई निकोन नालनी ईरोज चप्प
And Lord, you have begun the work of sanctification
परिशुद्ध परिचप्पडुटा याने कार्यमु
And this is the part of it, when we see a defeat, we want to confess
ओड़ीपोइन अपुरम मानु वोपुकोडमु, यला उन्नाड ई भागमुले पर्च
And the work of sanctification is a process, is not one-time act
कविती परिशुद्ध परिचप्पड़ अंटे वोक रोज जरिगिपड़े कादु, अदि प्रक्रिया, विधान
And let our God, with all his mercies, as we have seen in the scripture, continue his merciful, gracious work in our lives
कविती मान जियुतमुलो समस्त कनिकरमुलतो, समस्त कृपतो, आ देवुड़ ई कार्यमु मानलोनु चेन
Shall we pray?
रणि प्रार्थना जेसिन
Please don't keep moving, it's a very, very solemn time
देचेसी ईट्वार्टू कदलकंडी गम्बेरमन सम्यम
Few minutes will close
कोण नीम्सालु मुकिंच
I'm sure the Lord has brought the timely message according to our need
तकिन सम्यमुलो मान आक्रकोलदी देवुड़ मानुमुंडुकु वर्तमानम तीस्कोच
There are areas of defeat in our lives
मान जियुतमुलो गुड़ा ओड़ीपोइना परिस्थितिलान्न
And sometimes it is consequence of sin
कोण सालु ई पापमलो चपरियावशन
And many times we have overlooked it and never confessed
कनेक्सालु वीटनी दाट वेलिपणम चूसी चुन्नटुनम वोपुकोलेदु
That's why so much of irritation, so much of loss and spiritual defeat is there
अंदिके चुरंडी आत्मसम्मंद इन्तो वोटमी जेल जूस्न वेसारपणम, विसिक्कपणम इन्तो निरुत्साह
We are not able to grow, we are not able to enjoy peace in our lives
आत्मलो यदले कपोतुनम, जियुतमुलो आनंदिंचले कपोतुनम, समाधनम लेकुण्ड
Every day, we are just adjusting ourselves rather than rejoicing
कविती प्रतिरोज यदो सद्दुकुन बोतुनम कानी आनंदिंचले कपोतुनम
But it is not God's plan that we should stay in that defeated or degraded life
कविती आ दिगजारीपोइना, आ ओड़ीपोइना जियुतमुलो ने मानु निलिच्छिन्नालन्नदी प्रभु कोरिका कादु
Our life is a dishonoring God
मान जियुतमु देवुन की गणहिनमाय गुण
Is it disgraceful to God?
अदि अनकु अपकीर्तित चेदि गुण
Is it disappointing God?
देवुन्य निरुत्सह परिचेदि गुण
Our own heart, our own situations tell us where we stand
कविती चुरंडी मान हृदयमु, मान परिस्थितिलु, मान एकड़ा निलबड़ुन्ना मानु चुप
So much of conflicts in our family
कविती कुटुमल इन्तो विबेद
No proper liberty in the ministry
परिचरलो मरी सरियन स्वातंत्रमु सेच्चले कुण
And so much of problems in the secular time
कविती मान सामाजिक जियुतमुलो गुड़ा समाधनमु लेनी परिस्थिति, नमले परिस्थिति
Some sin, some thing which is hindering God to enjoy a victorious life
कविती जय जियुतमुनु अनुभविंचकुण चुरंडी यदो वोक पापमलु आपताउंदी, आटंकपर्स
Although we have been confessing, but we have not been confessing in the right manner
वोपुकुण्डुन्नामु, अन अनुकुण्डुन्नाम कानी चुरंडी सरियन विधानमुलो मानु वोपुकोट्लेद
God has told us how we have to call upon God so much with all humility so to enjoy a victorious life
कविती इन्तो दीनुलमगा तक्किंचुकुन वारमे, मरी देवुन की आयनकु मात्रम मानु मोरपेट्कोली मरी प्रगच्छुक
Today, let us do that at this time
रण्डी सम्यमुलो मान विजयवंतला मग्गटको वालागु ओपुकुण
If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves
ना पीरु पेट्टाबडिना प्रजलु तमुतामु तक्किंचुकुनी
And turn from their wicked ways
वारी चेडुतर्मची वारु तिरिगी
I will hear from heaven
नेनु आकाश्मण वारु मोरबिंद
I will forgive their sin
वारी प्रार्थना लकिंची, वारी पापलकु शमिंच
I will heal their land, heal their lives
वारी जियुतमुलो यदा, वारी देशमुनु स्वस्थ पर्चुद
Today, God is also telling us
कविती नेडु देवुड़ इदेमार जप्त
As he told Joshua, "Come on, arise, why are you, why are you still waiting?"
योहोश्वा तन्नटुका लेम्मु नीव नेला मेदा, आ मुकमु एला, मोपुदु
I am ready to give you victory
विजयमच्छुकु नेनु सिद्ध गुण अंटाड
Come in the right way
सरियन विधानमुलो आयदक रण्डी
Let us humble ourselves
रण्डी मानुम तक्किंचुकुण
In our hearts, let us pray this prayer
रण्डी मान हृदयमुलो चिन्न प्रार्थना जेस
With all brokenness and humility
इन्तो विरिगी नलिकन वारमे तक्किंचुकुनी
Lord, thank you for speaking to me
प्रभाव नातो माट्लान नवया निकोन
I acknowledge I am living a defeated life
अनु प्रभाव ओड़ीपोइना जियुतमुलो ने उन्नतन ओपुकुण
Some sin has entered into my life
यदो पापमु ना जियुतमुलो प्रवेशिंचिन
There is hatred in me
नालो देशमुंदी
Anger in me
कोपमुंदी
And so much of doubt and worries in my life
संदेहमु, चिन्ता, बादल
And I am not able to overcome
जेन जेन चले कपोत
But I want to be restored, I want to recover from this
प्रभावी ठन्नितुन्डी देवा नेनु पुरिकल्पवाडल अनुकुण लेदा समकुर्च वाडलनु कोर्त
I am very low in my spiritual life
ना आत्मय जियुतमुलो इन्तो दिगजारपोइनु चाला किन्द
I have disowned you
प्रभाव ने इन्तो प्रभाव मरी गणहिनमाय गए
I have disappointed you
प्रभाव ने इन्तो नेनु निराश पर्च
I brought disgrace to your name
प्रभाव ने नामानिक इन्तो अपकीर्तित नितेच
I never thought that my life will be a defeated life
प्रभाव असल ना जियुतमु इन्तो वोटमी तो उन्तर एन्ना नुकोलेदु
You died on the cross
नीव सिलमे दमरनिच
Shed your precious blood
नी अमुलम रक्तना कोरुक
Rose again victoriously
विजयवंतुड़गा तिर मुड़ो दम लेच
I am not able to enjoy that victory
आइथे नेनु आ विजयमुनु अनुभविंचले कपोत
But thank you for speaking to me
प्रभाव नातो माट्लान नवया निकोन
As your forgiven David, I also humble myself
प्रभाव ने दाविदुनु शमिस नेनु कुड़ा नेने तक्किंचुकुन
I want to go back and put things right in my life
ना जियुतमुलो नेनु मरी तिरिगिवेली अन्डितनी सरिजेस्कोली कोर्त
So many sinful elements which are ruling in my life
अड़ना जियुतमुलो पापानीकु सम्मंदिस्न नेकमानवी परिपालिस्त येलुत
Maybe covetousness is there
दुराश
So many worldly pleasures are there
लोकानुसारमाईना सुकबोगा उन्न
And so many things which are not acceptable to you
नीकु अंगीकार योग्यमान खानवी इन्नो ना जियुतमुलो
That has led me away and far away from your presence
ये वन्नी कुड़ा प्रभाव निनु लेदा नी सनिदुनु नंदुरम जेस
No hunger for God's word
देवुन वाक्यमुट आकल्लेदु
No desire for prayer
प्राधनकोरुकु आशलेदु
No desire for fellowship
सावासम रावलने कोरिक आशलेदु
I've been living a nominal Christian life
यदो नामकार्तमाईना कृष्ट जियुतमुलो जिविस्त
But if you come today
आइथे निवरदोस्त
I will be ashamed to meet you
निनु कलिस्कुडं नाक सिग्ग
But I don't want to be like that
आइथे अला सिग्ग मुकम्तो उन्डकोरेटलेद
I humble myself
नने तक्किंचुकुण
Forgive my sins
नु पापालकु शमिंच
Give me grace to put things right
प्रभाव संगतलु सरिजेस्कुन न कृप
I want to enjoy that victorious life
प्रभाव आ जय जियुतम, आ विजयवंतमान जियुतम अनुभविंचले
You are ready to forgive me and lift me up
प्रभाव ने नुकु शमिस्तक सिद्ध नु पाइकेत्तुकु इश्त
You are ready to give me victory over my defeated life
प्रभाव ना ओड़ीपोइना जियुतमु पाय विजयमुनु किवाल
Lord, please help me
प्रभाव नाक साय
Today onwards, I want to live an overcoming life
ईरोज नुंडी नेनु जय जियुतमु, जयिंचुवाणिगा उन्डलनु कोर्त
Thank you for accepting me
प्रभाव ने नंगीकरिंचन निके
If this has been your prayer
चुरंडी इलागु मेर प्रार्थना जेस
Kindly show your hand and put it down
देचेस मीकुड़ हस्त अनि चुपिंच
Is there anyone?
इदे एवरेन अन
May Lord bless you sister
सहोदर देवु देविच
Anyone else?
एवरेन असर
Anyone else?
इनके एवरेन
You know your heart
नी हृदयमु के तेल
You know your defeat
नी वोटमी एमित्रो निकु तेल
And God is ready to lift you up
देवुड़ निनु पाइकेत्तड़ानिकी इश्त
If you want such blessing
अलांटी आशीर्वाद देवुन नेवु, नेवु कावलन कोर्त
Show your hand and put it down
नीकुड़ हस्त अनि चुपिंच
May Lord bless you sister
सहोदर देवु देविच
May Lord bless you brother
सहोदर देवु नी देविच
Anyone else?
इनके एवरेन एवरेन असर
Loving heavenly Father
प्रेम गलापरलोकमुंद
Thank you for your word
प्रभाव ने वाक्यमुके
How true it is Christians can also live a defeated life
प्रभाव कृष्ट वुलुकुड़ा ओड़ीपोइना जियुतमुलो उन्तर अन्त सत्यम
Lord, thank you for showing unto us the ways how we can overcome defeat
ई वोटमुनी यला जयिंचकलमु अने विष्ण लो, अनेक विधालु प्रभाव मेरुमक चुपिंच
Thank you for the life of sin of Israel
इसरैल योका जियुतमु मामुंडुकु तीस्कोच
Life of Joshua
योहोश्वा ने तीस्कोच
You could recover them and bring them to a victorious stand
बुड़ियोश्वा मरी विजयवंतमाईना परिस्थितिकी मान वारनी समकुर्च
Provided they confessed the right things at the right time
आइथे सरियान अन मरी तकिन सम्यमुलो, तकिन विधानमुलो प्रभाव वारु वोपुकुण
They were pleading for consecration
परिशुद्ध परिचप्पडुटा कोरुकु मोरपेट्कुण
And they will thank you and praise you for showing us how they could humble themselves and acknowledge their sin
कविती तमुताम तक्किंचुकुण प्रभाव वार पापम वार वोपुकुण अन्दरम्बड़ निकु प्रभाव स्तुत
How could they come victoriously and enjoy a victorious life
कविती इन्तो विजयवंतमगा जय जियुतमु अनुभविंच्छुकु प्रभाव वारु पुनुकुण
Know the hearts of those who are listening to this word
प्रभाव ई वाक्यमु एन्द्रायत्ते तम हृदयमु लंगीकरिंचन रोस्टीकरिंचन वारु मेरे
Aren't those who have prayed in their hearts
प्रभाव हृदयमुलो प्रार्थना जेसिन वारु ने
Those who have shown their hands
मरी हस्तमुलो चुपिंचन वारु गुण
Today onwards, grant them the right way of victory in their lives
कविती वार जियुतमुलो प्रभाव सरियान विधानमुलो विजयवंतला उन्न लेटला प्रभाव वारकु साय
I am able to see the Lord is always beside them
प्रभु यल्लपुड़ वारी प्रक्खने उन्नाडु अनि गुर्तिंच्छुक साय
I want our heavenly advocate
प्रभाव नीवे माक परलोकबुत्तर
You are the only one who can plead for us and give us thy victory
प्रभाव सम्पूर्णमगा नीसले मोरपेट्टाबड़ु मेरु सम्पूर्ण विजयमुर माक दायच
Such victory may be granted to thy people
प्रभाव अलांटी सम्पूर्णम निवजमु नीबिट्ले कुण
Bless thy word
प्रभाव ने वाक्यम देविंच
Write them in our hearts
माहृदय पलक
Let not the enemy catch up with thy word
श्यत्रु नी वाक्यम दंगलिंचुकुण
Make your word to be our experience
प्रभाव वाक्यम मान अनुभवम
Bring with abundant fruit for your name
वाक्यम नी नामकोरु अधिकमाईना फलम
Thank you for using thy servants in homage
प्रभाव माम जिलो निदासलनु उपयुक्त विधानमु स्तुत
Thank you for the burden with which thy word was ministered
कविती प्रभाव इन्तो भारम तो वाक्य पर्चर चेगुल्ल
It may, Lord, we may have to share it with others
कविती तरलतो पंच
The word may be multiplied to make a blessing to many
प्रभाव वाक्यम विस्तरिंचन एकुले को आशीर्वाद कार्यमु गुण
Pray with thanksgiving in the name of Lord and Savior Jesus Christ
कुतक दास्तल चलिस्तु, यसु कृष्ट वारी धन्यकरम नाम नस्तुत ची प्रार्थना जिस्त
On the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, love of God the Father, fellowship and communion of the Holy Spirit be with us both now and forevermore Amen And remember tomorrow morning we gather at nine o'clock for time of worship
देचेसी नापवेट्कुणि रेप हृदयमु, आ राधन कोरुकु तोमिद गण्टला कुड़
So kindly come in time
देचेस सम्यन कर
Try to invite others also
इतरलो कुड़ा देचेस आहन
We'll have our brothers again ministering tomorrow as well
सहोदर लो मान मध्यो रेप गुड़ा परिचर
So, and also tomorrow there will be a special youth meeting
रेपु प्रत्येकमाईना यवनस्तुले कुड़
So all the young people try to invite others as well
कविती यवनस्तुलेन वारु देचेस मेरु गुड़ा मरी इतरलो नाहन
May God bless you
देवुड़ मन देविंच
Praise the Lord